The daily, right? So a couple of things, we'll go to the weekly. So if you go here on the weekly, you can see this area here was previous support way back in May of 2021. Broke through it, came back to retest it, August 2022. December of last year and they broke through it, um, November of this year, right? So this one higher timeframe in the weekly, right? So I dropped down to my daily, what I noticed was price retracing back to that area, alright? So, alright, I'm cool, but I'm not entering yet because remember that replay. Oops, it went too fast, hold on. So come Thursday, this is what we seen, right? Just because we see this doesn't mean I enter a trade. I have to wait for a reversal pattern. Reversal pattern can be double top, I mean double bottoms, inverse head and shoulders or uh falling wedge, that's right? Or that's a reversal pattern, you can reverse candlesticks, a hammer candle, a bullish engulfing candle, right? So do our analysis on the higher timeframes, we don't enter on a higher timeframe, so we enter on a lower timeframe, right? So I go to my down to my four hour, I can see price on a four hour is pulling back as well, right? So we at that area, we marked off from the weekly timeframe, alright? So when I'm trading, I have four different windows up, right? I have the, when I'm trading this one, I see. So I have four different timeframes, so this one at the top would be my hourly, alright? This one right here with my four hour, and then this one down here would be my daily, that's it, alright? So as price was retracing, so this just be my setup, this is what I'm looking for. But I'm just gonna show the hourly candlestick, I mean the hourly chart. So it's price, I'm trying to bet you. So right there, boom. Once price retraced on the hourly, right, it traced to on 50 moving average, gave me a hammer candle. At that point, I am taking the trade, alright? Because I know one is pulling back, I know a hammer candle is a reversal at the bottom of a downtrend. And two, it happened at my 50 moving average. At this point, all I can do is just take the trade. You put your stop loss at the bottom of that trade, alright? So as this plays out. Let me speed it up. I'm still in the trade, I don't care about it's pulling back, my stop loss is at the bottom. If anything, I should be in green on this trade, alright? But my first price target is this area here, which we took out today. Boom, why was this my first price target? Because this where it got rejected in the past. And as you see, it never returned back here, it just went straight up. Any questions on that, on that uh, on the firm? Well, I'm not that good of a teacher now, somebody has a question.
You a bad motherfucker, show.
There you go Juice, Juice, you was here when I said, I say we got one Juice.
Yeah. If y'all were listening, if he ever say we got one, make sure you got some buying power, man, go find some.
So you was already looking at a firm before? I didn't hear, I didn't get that part, I couldn't kind of wait.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at firm uh before, because I, I know.
You looking, you looking at it before the market, before the market opened, like?
Yeah, so what I'm looking for, y'all know my setups, right? This is my setup. High, pull back, higher high, pull back. So if I see something this clear.
Yeah.
My attention, why? Because the structure is there, I don't have to second guess it, right? So. I dropped down to my hourly, right? Don't this look exactly like higher highs and higher lows? I don't, I don't can guess this setup.
Yeah.
Waiting for entry. When something this clean, just take the trade. And if you wrong, you wrong, right? Come on, none of this shit is hundred percent, wrong, you wrong. But we was right, and look what happened, three hundred percent, two hundred percent, double your money.
For real. You gotta be patient. That's it, yeah.
A lot of people aren't patient. Uh, Palantir, right? Bring up Palantir. Same thing, right? So this stuff wasn't here. Hold on, let me go to replay. I'm trying to stop, started right there. Same thing, alright? Same thing with Palantir, right? So why do I have this area here marked off? Because if you pay attention, when price got to forty, what did it do? It bounced up. Right, so essentially, if price return, if I see a reversal pattern in this area, I'm going to take the trade, alright? So once price got in here, there's my hammer candle here, or dragonfly Doji on the hourly. Alright, now, one thing about Palantir, it's been moving straight up, straight up. So it's really to find an entry on the higher timeframes because it hasn't really been pulling back. So I have to drop down to the lower timeframe to find an entry. That's why, that's why I'm showing the hourly. Once again, return to that area, I'm above fifty moving average. What did it do? Just took on. Now this today's price action, and you see, what did it do when it came back down here? It bounced again. So now this area here is acting as support. Any questions on this one?
Hey, you could show them, show them ABGO, so when you get in that and they go eight hundred percent, nobody surprised. And nobody can say you ain't tell them either.
ABGO, so this one, I'm waiting. So I'm waiting on you, a couple of things happening here. Get your resistance up here, right? But we making higher lows up into resistance, right? And also, who has earnings this in the video? So it needs a catalyst to really get some momentum to break this resistance. Now I'm looking at it because, one, we above my fifty moving average in the weekly. We just broke it on the daily last week, however, which is fine. As long as we don't take out this higher low here, I'm still bullish on it. What I'm waiting for is a reversal pattern, double bottom, inverse head and shoulders, or falling wedge. Once I get that confirmation of those reversal patterns, or this candlestick, like this right here. This is a dragonfly Doji, because this candle was once all red, right? And the buyer stepped in to buy it back up. So this is my first sign of a reversal, that is a bullish candlestick at the bottom of a downtrend. However, I'm still being patient, I'm still gonna be patient. Not sold yet because price is below the fifty moving average, so I'm still waiting.
So for that one, what you need to see if you want us to get in that? Wait for it to, with a higher high and then?
No, 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 uh, I wanna see a double bottom. Here, it may not give it, alright?
No, at least a double bottom, double bottom, uh, like, next to that, that low right there, next to that, um, that Doji, I mean that flying dragonfly Doji?
Yeah, that's what I'm waiting for. And it may not give it to me, and I'm okay with it, alright? I'm okay with it, because you can find an entry, you can.
But if it consolidates, if it does consolidate, then it does give you a double bottom, that will really let you know, like, okay, cool.
Correct.
Okay.
If this fifty moving average was right here, where price like bouncing off of it, I'll take the trade, right? But too many times, this happened to me. And it go up and test that fifty moving average.
And then come back down, uh huh, uh huh.
I'd rather just be patient, and if it breaks that fifty moving average, fine, that mean I'm back bullish on it, alright?
Okay, let me ask this though, if it break that moving, and then, would you wait? Would you be like, okay, let me go ahead and jump in, or would you wait for it to come back to retest that fifty moving and then get in?
Right.
Alright, I don't wanna get fancy with it, so. Because there is something you can do, uh, let me get rid of this, alright? Yes, answer your question Juice, I will wait for that fifty to get tested.
Okay, okay.
I will wait, however, let's just say this. I'm on one hour, what if I get this? Get my fifty, only pro.
Wow, and it come back, ah.
Okay, I see the vision.
So I would just, I would just have to be patient a little bit longer.
Okay.
But I'll let y'all know, because I don't want y'all to go out there and practice that, or back test it.
Show, you recording it?
I know you're asking Prince. I ain't got that software on my laptop.
Wait, that one hour that you on, is that, is that the one hour fifty daily? Or is that your actual daily, uh, that's the one hour, okay?
Yeah, that's the fifty, I'm on a one hour.
On the one hour, okay, cool.
Uh, let's look at Starbucks, so Starbucks, same thing, right? So. So you notice Starbucks has been trading in this range really since, I'm gonna say, was it September sixteenth? May, September, it's just been trading in the range, then it finally broke through, right? So it finally broke through, now I'm on my four hour. I'm gonna do a replay, just to show you what I saw here. Do here. So now, we broke through it, right? We broke through that range, I don't trade the breakout, which you can, listen, there's nothing wrong with trading breakout. If you trade it, trade it. For me, I prefer my contracts a lot cheaper, so I can get a better risk to reward, alright? I think it was me and Juice in the lounge when this was formed, so I'm gonna press play. So. When that hammer candle. So when that hammer candle flows right here, that's when I'd say Juice, this is a go for calls, right? And I said, what you can do is either grab this week's ninety-eight, or it was last, last week's ninety-eight or ninety-nine calls. But to be safe, grab next week's, end of money ninety-eight calls for this week, alright? So. This plays out, so I grabbed ninety-nine calls, those calls went a hundred fifty percent, alright? Now, did it hit my first target? No, because like I said, no, it doesn't always do that, if I press play. Nope, never hit it. But guess what? If this starts to retrace against me, I'm up a hundred fifty percent, I'm not letting this trade go from green to red. I'm gonna start collecting some profit. Then it opened up today, again, it just took off. So now this fifty is acting as support, it bounced off of it, so if the market. If the market is bullish this week, it should go take out this one-on-one. And Juice, there's a reason why I told you to grab that ninety-eight, call in the money, is because even though if this retraced against you, you wouldn't have lost that much money, because you took the money.
Right, right.
But you would have been up so much though, like.
Oh, yeah.
Really could have got out and re-entered if you wanted to, that was your re-entry.
So that's my plan with Starbucks, see if it's gonna test it, alright? Now, let's just say you missed this trade, alright? And that's okay, it is okay. What it's going to do is, if it's a true uptrend, it's going to pull back, and you be ready for when it pulls back, go higher. But are you patient enough to wait for all this to happen?
Right.
That's the key. But once again, on the pullback, I wanna see a hammer candle, double bottoms, or a uh inverse head and shoulders, something. Price is, this is me reporting. Starbucks, um, Clean Spark, nah. I'm looking at Clean Spark. I think me and Prince was in the, it was just me and Prince in the Discord, in the lounge when this happened, right? So, start with my higher timeframe, right, I'm at the, I'm at my weekly, this is my weekly. Why did I have this area marked off? Because if you look at it, price kind of consolidated here for two weeks, and it blasted off, right? So essentially, I would think if price gets back to this area, it's probably some more orders sitting there, just gotta be patient. Now, if I drop down to my daily, once price returned to this area, what did it give you as a reversal? It double bottom, one touch, two touch, right? It broke through it, if you miss that, it's okay, wait for the pullback. What did it do? It pulled back here, and, hold on, let me show you. Oh, she's here. With this, alright, it was given. It was given, alright? Clean Spark, Bitcoin mining company, retest of the double bottom, swing calls could work, stop loss low, the week slow moving stop. Go end of money or add the money with time, so at least get two weeks with it, it's gonna run with Bitcoin. I gave it to y'all. This, it was right here. What did it do? Boom. That was it. So the thirteen calls, when it was right here at ten dollars for November fifteenth, was forty dollars. They hit a high of four hundred dollars. Just be impatient, just be impatient, that's it. That was it. Uh, let's see here, what else?
Sounds crazy.
Affirm, no, affirm, was it affirm we traded? Affirm, listen, affirm been, I gotta point out affirm again, it's been on some monster moves lately, right? Look at this one. Retraced here, hit the fifty moving average, went higher, pull back, went up, like, can't get no cleaner than that. Like, this is clearly their step. Boom, boom, break it, pull back, break it, pull back, break it, pull back. You see how clean that is?
No, for real.
You could have just traded this for the month of September and made all your money.
No, for real.
That was it. And then, if I get rid of this. Like, that, that is clean, that's affirm, um. Excuse me, trying to find something for y'all. I'll point out one, I'm just cherry picking to find these setups, um, but it doesn't always work. I'm gonna find one that where it didn't work, alright? So Google, I'll go to my daily, look at here. Look at this. So, you notice Google came down, right? Why do I have this area as a possible reversal? Because if I go to my weekly. This was previous resistance, alright, look at this. We'll go to the monthly, yeah. So this was previous resistance right here, on the monthly and weekly, right? So when price came back down here, what do I wanna see? Double bottom, inverse head and shoulders, alright? What did Google form? Inverse head and shoulders, there's your left shoulder, head, right shoulder. Nah, if you missed this, this was earnings gap up, just wait for the retest, what did it do? Retest, where your first price target would have been, right here.
Right back, yeah, right back there.
I think Bob grabbed the one seventy-two fifties, him and Pierre. They grabbed calls right, even though they sold them early, because that day they got in, it didn't really do anything. Well, I think Bob said his calls went from shit. I think a dollar something to like seven hundred dollars. There's the first price target. Same thing with Amazon. Something with Amazon, oh, here, go right here.
They got a commercial now, so it's.
Same thing with Amazon, alright? You got resistance, resistance, it broke through it, retest, went higher. Then if you miss this, it gave you another opportunity, alright? Last week, came back to retest, price is better on hourly. Came back to retest, went higher. I wanna bring up Exxon, so Exxon been a real mess. So Exxon, I did make some money on Exxon, but I didn't provide the follow-through that I was looking for, which is fine, don't get me wrong, which is fine. Like I said, none of this is hundred percent. But as we see, it pulled back, and then, you see here, we have all these hammer candles, which is supposed to be bullish, but it's, it's not pushing through. So on this one, I'm going to wait for more structure to set up, when price starts looking like this, this one I will start trading. Right now, if I really look at this, it's trading in the range, last, since November sixth. So this could somehow break out, retest, and go higher.
And then come back, and then you, yeah, I got you.
Like I said, this one, it just hasn't played out, like, it doesn't play out right away, so it depends on your risk management, how patient. Alright, let's, yeah. I'll give you one that didn't work, Merk. We'll go right here, so.
How you know when to cut your loss, when it, when it goes below your entry?
Yep.
Okay.
When it hit that stop block. So I was watching Merk, because I'm thinking it was gonna bounce in this area, because if you look here, this bounce here, which made it its all-time high. Alright, this was the bounce that made it go up, so I'm thinking the same thing, right? Come back here, it's gonna bounce, but guess what? I've never entered a trade on here, know why? Because I never got a reversal pattern. So this was, uh, no, no, this was that candle, this was an inside candle, the first week of November, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, the first week of November was an inside candle, which, so if this would have broke to the upside, boom, I'm good, right? But it broke into the downside, I'm looking for calls, so I didn't take puts, even though the puts paid, right? If I was looking for calls, I never got a signal to get in. Alright, even when I get my double bottom, once it touched that second bottom, it didn't give me a reversal order.
Reversal, yeah, alright.
So I've never entered a trade to go on. And that's okay, right? I'm going to stick with it, because whenever reversal happens, I'm gonna make sure I'm there. Alright, that's what I say, it doesn't always happen, I'm glad this one, I showed it, but I didn't, I never entered a trade, they showed me a double bottom. I didn't get a hammer, uh, I got one hammer candlestick, but that was very small. It wasn't enough volume in that candlestick, didn't get inverted head and shoulders, I didn't get a falling wedge, or none of that. I'm okay. I got one for y'all too, it took off today, Root, R-O-O-T. Went on to my daily, what was it, fail. This one, no, it did take off today, but I think it was on a smaller timeframe. No, it wasn't, it wasn't this one, it wasn't this one, so for this, I will look for some type of pullback. Let's say, price starts to pull back to that fifty moving average, go higher. Alright, I'll give you another one, this shop, shop has been on a rampage.
Yeah, it's been going.
Same thing, right? Look at this. It had earnings, so earnings did help.
Mm-hmm.
Broke through, pull back, broke through, came back to that fifty moving average, the area where it previously bounced, and just took off. Went from seventy-seven dollars to one fifteen. In what, two weeks?
Yep.
That's good money on, on shop, but that's ours. Uh, I'm not going too fast, Disney, same thing, right? Disney had earnings. Alright, so you gotta, sometimes, sometimes you just gotta use basics, supporting resistance with this stuff, right? So if you look, resistance here, resistance here, it broke through it, came back down, now this is the four hour, I don't enter on the four hour. I enter the hourly, right? Once price retraced, I get tweezer bottoms, I get tweezer bottoms, two hammer candles, back to back, gonna tweeze them, tweeze them. Pull back, what did it do? Go higher. Nah, it did have earnings, don't get me wrong, it did have earnings, so. But that was another textbook setup. What's another, Square, Square, same thing, Square has been, look at this.
Running.
So it had earnings, so that gap down from earnings. So it had earnings, so that gap down from earnings, look what they did the next day. It brought it right back up at the fifty moving.
Got up, mm-hmm.
It never closed below these higher lows, because these are, this is a long way. And it's just been taking off. Alright, just been taking off. If you missed it, okay, it, it can provide another opportunity right here. Down to my hourly, what did it do? Broke it, came back.
Came back.
Go higher, first price target was hit, boom, thing ran from eighty-one dollars. To ninety-one, eleven dollars in two days, that's good money.
Hey, you can, you can go look at two tickets for me, UPS, and then after that, you said what? Yeah, it did, UPS did, I got into that motherfucker too. I'm scared though, I don't know where it's gonna go.
Same thing, right, I even got this damn box here already. So, this where it gapped up from earnings, right? It just came back down to retest it.
And then it's gone back good.
So, I think this is a. Somebody noticed pattern, where I got a Doji, is it Shooting Star, or even, I think it's Shooting Star. This is bullish and golfing candle anyway.
I think so, I think the Morning Star.
Morning Star.
Yeah.
Also.
The bullish and golfing candle?
Yeah, this is golf, that previous candle.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You will see a lot of those over. But, if you missed this trade though, even on the hourly, right, it gave you inverse head and shoulder. Left shoulder, head, right shoulder. Alright, on the pullbacks, what do I want to see, inverted head and shoulders, double bottom. Every time.
Where do you think it can go to? Where do you think it'll go to? On, maybe looking at the daily, or weekly, whatever you usually look at.
This was the earnings gap up.
Uh-huh.
At one forty-five, nah, it's probably gonna take some time to go to one forty-five, but.
Yeah, it probably won't go right away.
Yeah, not gonna go right away, but they have been, this has been moving sideways, majority of, once you got here.
Solidating.
Solidating, yup.
So you think we get to like one thirty-seven-ish?
Because the market is bullish, it's definitely, it's already at one thirty-five, ain't it?
Yes.
If, if the market is bullish, we can hit one thirty-seven.
I got it until this Friday, so that's why I'm like, oh, we. But, I did the little, little pullback method and all of that, and I was like, alright, cool, we might have something.
Nah, I do want, I do want in on this, though, juice, hang on, hold you up, my boy.
Yeah. That made me, that made me, that made me feel real good.
Alright, let, okay, let's just say this. Since this area here was resistance, right, resistance, resistance, resistance. Let's just say, this part's actually resistance again, right? Since I know it's back above it, I will wait for, if I miss this trade, if I'm not in now, I'm not chasing.
Alright. You're gonna come back?
I'll wait for price to come back, right?
Mm-hmm.
Moving average somewhere, and go higher.
Hmm, okay.
But, my daily is, is bullish on here though, so. Like, that daily is bullish, right at the fifty moving average.
Oh, that's bad.
And safety, look, look at here too. What you have, look at all this resistance here. Resistance, resistance, all this is resistance, broke through, support, support, came back down, support. Sometimes it just makes a supporting resistance.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think we talked about, it was, I think it was five.
Man, this motherfucker right here, man.
I want, now. This, this has pullback, alright, and you see on this pullback already, it, it kind of bounced. Alright? It already, it tend to bounce.
Right.
Five eighty-nine? I mean. Let's see.
Oh shit, I had calls, man, I can't believe myself today, then I saw my entry too. What'd you say, Key?
Um, go get Tesla too.
Tesla like China.
Tesla like to pick up this one on the edge, with its blue flag. Really, I wanted Tesla really to come back to two sixty-six, but they ain't gonna come back.
Well, like I said, two sixty-six.
So, it's Tesla on, um, to go to like. It should be on like the hourly, um, from Friday, they turned that three-ten level to the support. Oh, yeah, there you go.
And it pulled back again today. It remains bullish like this, no key, first price target is down.
Show making it seem so simple, man.
It is simple.
You just, people just not patient.
Both of them make it seem so simple. Oh, God.
Y'all really wanna see, watch this, I'm gonna show you Doge, right? Doge provided two or three entries to get on, to get in before it really took off.
Oh, yeah, nah, I'm sending it Doge.
But you didn't, you didn't tell us though, bruh.
I listen, I wasn't paying attention to Doge, hang on. First off, you got your double bottom, alright, it broke it. It bounced, boom, another double.
Alright, for the people who, who don't know, can you explain to them double bottom, where are you seeing it at? Just in case they don't see it, where you see it.
So. Here's your first touch, right? Boom, alright, then it touched it again, gave me an inside bar. Alright, that's, that's a bullish, and it's on the second bottom touch, and then it broke into the upside, grab your calls. Now, this is a more aggressive entry, because normally you wait for the neckline of the double bottom, alright? Once it broke. Say if you missed this run-up, once it broke, it retraced back, gave you another double bottom, alright, right here. Hammer candle, right at the fifty moving average, boom, went higher, and this is the daily timeframe, y'all, this is daily timeframe. Now, let's just say you missed this leg, right, when it went from ten cents to fourteen cents, what'd the price do?
Consolidated, huh?
Pull back.
Came back.
What did it do after that, if you missed that run-up? Pull back, after that, they said, we tried to get you an entry, my dude.
Right, you didn't save it.
Yeah, yeah, you didn't wanna make no money. One, two, three, four, four try, four entries.
That's deep. That's deep.
You gotta be patient, my buddy, he made almost sixty percent on sand. Alright, same thing, alright, he was on the four hour. Right? It broke.
He said sixty or six hundred?
Sixty percent.
Sixty.
No, 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 he made six hundred, he turned like, he do the. The futures, I think, uh, the crypto herbs, uh, they like futures, so you bet if the price goes up, and you bet the price goes down, and you can leverage against it. So what did the price do over here? It broke it, if you missed this run, okay, it pulled back.
Went right back up.
Went right back up, boom.
Mm-hmm, all the crypto been doing that, X L M. Uh, what's that one, X L P, they all, they're doing like the same thing.
Nah, X L M ain't really found no pullback, it did right here, right? Say, hey, solid didn't here, nah, I can find an entry on this, I would just drop down to lower timeframe. Hourly, right, I found one. Pull back, double bottom, boom. Uh, X R P. You know, if y'all paying attention, I'm not going any lower than hourly. I'm not looking at the three minute, or five minute, or fifteen.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you be doing that, I'm nosy.
So even X R P gave you multiple tries on hourly, right? Pull back here, boom, pull back here, boom, pull back here. It's up, you just don't wanna get in, my dude. What up? This was, this doubled your money almost.
Mm-hmm.
Four cents all the way to a dollar twenty-six?
Yup. Yup, yup, yup. X L M is at a hundred and twenty-eight percent. Doge is at a hundred and three percent. X T Z was the other one I was saying, how about, that one's at seventy percent.
But, what's, if you use market structure when you trade, you just have to be patient, that's the only thing. Like I said, I haven't dropped in, I haven't dropped down to any timeframe lower than hourly.
Can you check, um, Nvidia?
Maybe that's earnings, so, I tend to, we personally, technical analysis can be thrown out the window when it's earnings, it can go either way. Some people say differently, but, I've never had any luck.
You showed us differently, so, I don't know why you keep saying that.
Because I keep losing earnings, that's what I'm. All this was some type of. That's usually, dropped down to my daily, so price came back in that area. Now, if it have earnings, I would look to go long on this. Because, this area, price spin was rejecting, came back down, see here, it bounced. Now it's back in this area, but it had. So I don't know, alright, and then if you look here, it broke high, came back to the fifty moving average, even though it broke below, which is fine. But always keep in mind this has earnings. Either direction, but if it didn't have earnings, I would grab calls on this. Just put my stop loss at the bottom of this candle. My first price target would be forty-nine, now you may have to buy some time loss, Nvidia is not moving like that, ten, fifteen dollars in a week anymore like that. I don't know if that helped you out.
Uh, yeah, it did.
I think it was, was it Roku, I see.
What about Palantir?
The way y'all talk about Palantir, she ain't really gonna help another place to go.
Bounced out of it, came back again, bounced out of it, came back in today, and look what dude, price does.
It's right there by the fifty moving though.
It is, yup. Exactly, so. And they buy, listen, if y'all notice, they've been buying every dip on Palantir.
Yeah, they do. That they do.
So, you can check out, you can check out P F E. Yeah, look at, yeah, what that look like? Yeah, like. It's dying, but I, I'm hoping it can bounce somewhere.
I was listening, I was.
You see like all of the, the health issue, they all kinda going down, mm-hmm. Hey, everybody, so, Lily.
I don't see anything yet, uh, Juice. Monthly is bearish, let's go to my weekly. Just don't see anything, weekly is bearish, looking at daily. Daily, they just not buying anything right now, Pfizer. This thing, it just at thirty dollars.
Hell, it might, even Lily down, Lily down a hundred dollars in the past week.
God damn.
Yeah, healthcare is down, down, down right now, so.
What about, uh, M O, that's been running like crazy, I'm trying to, I'm trying to. That's, uh, the dividend stock, ain't it? Uh, yeah. And, ain't even trying to let a nigga in it go.
Yeah, this one's tough, this one's tough. If you didn't get into, look, look at this.
Uh, that was earnings, yeah.
All this consolidation down here, when it finally broke it. Boom, I think this is earnings, yeah, it was. But you can find an entry, let's look at the four hour, alright, let's look at the hourly. Okay, so it, it pulled back to the fifty moving average on hourly, that was your entry.
What was that?
Last Tuesday, no, no.
No, see, I ain't, I'm, I'm late to the party.
Let's just see this. Hey, this thing, see, one thing, when something's going straight up like this, me, I don't trade it, because, why? It doesn't have what I'm looking for in a trade, right?
It's not structured.
It's no structure. It's just doing this.
But you get in on the right time, shit, I, I like that, that little joy, right? I want one of them.
Anything else before we go?
What about, uh, C L H?
Oh, yeah, that thing, boy, I tell you, I can't find a bounce spot for this area, they just don't wanna buy it.
Oh, you know, I thought they might have like reacted better, um.
After earnings?
No, after the fight.
Oh, you, because it was on the, uh, it was on the, on the, on the, uh, which one probably, on the, on the spam, not the ground, on the ring.
Yeah, they were one of the sponsors, yeah.
I see, I think it was on their shorts too.
Jake Paul came in with it, he had like the towel, so I was like, oh, maybe they, it might get a little push from that, but. Apparently, I, I like Celsius.
For real, I guess, I guess over with, bruh.
This thing has just been dropping from that double top.
Nasty, nasty, nasty. Prince gave y'all a good, um, play though.
Yeah, up here, like.
And that was, yeah, that was all she wrote after that.
That was a rap.
I need to see some more buying pressures. Uh, I can do Nike, so I know we looked at a, a, a lot of bullish ones, but, I don't know, a few of them that's bearish was Nike, McDonald's.
Oh, yeah, I probably traded that, that was on Friday, or Thursday.
Even on the weekly, you can see it, alright? Low, pull back, drop. Here, boom, pull back, drop, right? And so it's really, not really good, but if I go downtown four hour, I think it's gonna be entry, yup. Pull back, boom, you shouldn't know, like, these wits were selling the story, because every time it touched it, it gave a whack. Boom, pull back. But, that's really about it, so it's probably gonna come back down to the seventy-one area, just the area where it really bounced at. And also this where it had a lot of accumulation, was moving sideways. So I was watching Marvel today, because. So I was watching Marvel today, because.
Right, everybody keep talking about, they keep talking about Marvel.
So if you look, price came back to this area, right? Moving average, boom. So I dropped down to my daily, me, my daily, my hourly. Have my hammer candle right here, alright? So, I was thinking, okay, now it's got my attention. But I spent two times where prices below this fifty moving average, and it did exactly what this did today. Came to it.
Drop, even lower. Lower lows.
But, but if the fifty moving average was underneath, I'll, I'll be, I'll be fine taking it, but it wasn't. Now, let's just say. It came back down. Let's just say if it came back down, it gave me a double bottom with another hammer candle, I would take it, right? I'd take my chances right there, but it didn't do that.
That's the support you got drawn, a day eighteen, eighty-three?
I just drew that for the double bottom. But you can see it all, if you look left.
I'm wondering if that's like, the selling pressure slowing.
That daily candle is bearish.
Yeah, it is, but you know, I, you know, I love a good reversal, so. I do wonder, yeah.
Any other triggers?
Oh, oh, what about Netflix?
I see, I've seen some people trading Netflix.
Mm-hmm, Netflix went up, up today.
Ooh, wait.
Damn, high bro, that shit is ridiculous. And they out of line for going up for that shit they pulled Tyson.
That's probably why they went up, everybody thought that was gonna go down.
They, um, Netflix one of those ones, they even though their contracts are really expensive, even the ones further out the money moves because their volume is so high on them.
They need to look down stock split shit.
I agree.
Yeah, so me, I wouldn't touch, me personally. I got clapped Friday trying to get fancy with this shit.
Showed on like nothing, not risky.
I got clapped Friday trying to get fancy.
About money, yeah.
Onion.
Our fun, our money end for the funniest.
I'm trying, what else we been trading? PTR, mm.
We traded Walmart.
Oh, go look at AMD.
So I think this rock to Walmart, uh, across here. Well, my first price target was right here. AMD, AMD, it popped, stayed in it.
I don't know, I haven't looked at, oh yeah, they did. Yep, sure did.
Yeah, that's a smart candle though.
If we get some follow through, if we get some follow through, that, that might not be that bad. If, um, if Nvidia goes up like it should for their earnings, that might, that might. Mm-hmm, it'll pull that whole tech sector. Just like, remember when we had traded MU? And MU went crazy.
I remember that for sure.
This could be a slant hit, inverse head and shoulders.
Yeah, that don't, that don't look that bad. I'm gonna have to watch that, especially if the video do that, that might be. A good swing, cause they already coming out of that downtrend.
Be quiet.
Oh, it's so, it's so strict in there.
So, for people, when I say. This is what I'm looking for, right? Cause I know. In the trading world, here's my universal pattern, right? If we're in an uptrend and the price starts to pull back, look for that double bottom, right? Inverted head and shoulders, follow wedge. I'm starting to see more of these bullish rectangles, that's basically consolidation, then that breakout.
And then it shoot, yeah.
So we in a downtrend and price pulls back, those double tops, here's right thing, looking for those type of things.
I mean, you are goddamn on the, on a double top on a Palantir before, uh.
No, no, I have not touched Palantir since. Listen, this whole run with Palantir, I have not been able.
I bet you I got in on some puts.
That would just be straight, you just going against the trend.
Nah, I'm not talking about today. I'm talking about like a couple weeks ago, yeah, I got it, I thought he got us some puts. I ain't talking about right now. I ain't doing that.
If it was, probably was in this area, weird, but it was short-lived.
Right, I remember it had went down, you said what? Yeah, it went down a little bit, and then I, I remember, I could have sworn it was you saying, yeah, I seen that double top. And you were, I think you were, you got some, uh, some puts on it, but it could be similar.
Please don't say the P word, we're talking about.
Yeah, my bad, man, I, you feel me, like? My bad, I was talking about a couple weeks ago, man, I ain't talking about right now. Oh, man.
Let's see if anyone hear any notes and allow questions.
Mm, they quiet today.
Okay, you take a look at Apple first. I think Apple did a little something today. Trying to think with Apple, I just, it's trading in its range, I go to my daily, I think I pointed this out. Um, I mean. It's tough, because it's really, it hasn't really been, uh, recently, right? I'm starting to see some structure on hourly and four hours better now, right? I'm starting to see some stuff. In this area, I can bring this up some, there you go. So really, it's just been trading in this range, right? Here, 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 it came back here, touched it again. Now, I'm starting to see some structure on hourly, I'll go to my four hour. It's tough. Me, I'm, I'm staying away from it. Because even on a larger timeframe, I think it's trading in the range. It is, right? So if I get rid of these candlesticks, I don't know. Here. Here, so now, even on a larger timeframe, you can see it's trading in the range. Now, this is the higher timeframe, not saying you can't enter on the lower timeframes and, and where, catch a bid and go higher. Absolutely, right? So if I get calls on this. That first target is at two thirty-six, right? But for me, cause I traded the pullbacks. It'd be tough. Like, there's no clear markets, so if you look at this, right? There's no clear structure in it, just been trading sideways. Then if we go look at a firm. Look at the difference in the market structure, right? This is what we wanna trade, this is what we wanna trade. We don't wanna trade when it looks like this. I can't read that. You see the difference? So really, it's just been trading in a range, and for me, cause it doesn't have that clear market structure pattern, I'm staying away from it. Could it go up? Absolutely. I just won't be in it until I see a clear, uh, market structure. Uh, I think Bob, I was preaching to Bob, we have to take trades when it, when it setup is obvious and clear. Alright, I can't go wrong taking setup when it's like this. Look, look how cleaner that looks compared to Apple. I don't know what it's gonna do.
It's floating in that range, right?
Now, it's at the fifty moving average on my four hour, it can reject too, here, right? Or it can just go higher, it's in the middle of that range.
What's up, my good fellas? Can you, uh, can you check, uh, Sophie's ticker?
Alright, so SP five hundred, did that help?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
So fuck went up today a little bit, didn't it?
It did, it touched that area again, the hot for the year. So, look, look at this one too, like down here, right? All this consolidation it did down here, they accumulated these shares, broke it, pulled back to my fifty moving average, took off. Guess what it did? Came back to retest it, boom, took off. Uh, so let me drop down to my four hour. Now, it's really just in its range, here, let me go to my hourly. So for me, because I didn't get in here, like if I would've got in here, first price target is here, cause that's carried it in the past. I'm looking for calls on here. I'm waiting for price to break through and come back down. I'm not gonna say it's gonna break way up here now, it's, it's just a draw. That's just how I trade, alright, I wait for price to break through and come back, because all I know is. That was just my resistance, then if I go look. A little bit on a higher timeframe, it's why we getting rejected up here.
Did y'all, uh, talk about any setups for tomorrow?
No, we haven't, um, I didn't really see any.
So what y'all been talking about this whole time?
Ticker, previous tickers, um, structure, Chino, did that help? So who caught off Sophie?
Yeah, I did, I did, I did.
But, don't get me wrong, it is bullish on the monthly, alright, I think it's bullish. Okay, hold on, hold on here, now see, the weekly, uh, take a look. This weekly candle was a doggy candle, it's letting me know, last week they had that much buying pressure, right? They didn't buy that much last week, cause it was a doggy candle. That's not to say that, hey, they not, they gonna stop buying it, cause they absolutely. One, my month, my monthly is very bullish. So like I said, I will wait for the high to get broken, pull back, get calls.
I think some of them are already in that, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, some people already in there, yeah. Anything else before we disconnect?
S-S-L-V.
Sam Lima, Victor?
Uh, Bravo, Sam Lima Bravo.
So me.
Just because I saw a double bottom on that, and I'm like, okay, where we going?
Take money just been on here commentating the whole time?
True, bro. I'm learning too, bruh.
Hey, maybe, maybe you need to sit your ass down and quit get your pen and pad, alright?
Bobby, we got a guest, we got a guest.
I do like this, so, so, I do like this, that is your. That is the double bottom, but after that, so after it broke above this fifty, they haven't been buying it much, right, pulling back. But I'm pretty sure on the four hour, it's probably pulling back to the fifty moving average, alright? Wait for it to get a little closer, then on the hourly, alright, this is below. So what I would do on this one? I would wait for price for me to come back and touch this fifty moving average, if it continues to go down. You looking to get calls, right?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
And I would wait, because even on your daily, I'm not even seeing, you know, I mean, here, they got an inside bar here, so. They may break into the upside.
Alright, thank you.
Did y'all go over Starbucks? Y'all go, y'all went over Target?
Didn't Kier say, uh, Walmart was going crazy?
You might not want Target this week, they got earnings.
That thing paid.
I know what you don't like, you don't like earnings wise.
Didn't you just tell me to be quiet?
I just was trying to let you know, we got guests.
Who to guess? If they in this discord, they not guess.
I'm the guest.
They're not, they're not in here yet.
Oh, oh, oh yeah, I'm ignorant, y'all, I ain't, ain't, what the fuck? Let me come, go back and mute, my bad, I'm gonna let y'all be professional.
Alright, so Target, so Target did give an entry, right, one. So I'm gonna go to the weekly. So, but, let's, let's, let's figure this out. Really just been trading in this range, right? Really, so, that's really all it is. Target in its range since August, right? Hit here, came down. Came back up, came back down, let's see, this daily did. Went down with your four hour, so now I got a little structure on four hour, right, cause now I have a high, alright, this was a high really. Came back to test this area. Here, that is a bull flag. Alright, that's a bull flag, back to the fifty moving average, first price target went here. Essentially, I'm looking for price to come back up here, cause that's where top of that range is at. So if you can cause in here, great job, great execution. If you're looking to get in this trade, I think you just gotta be patient and wait for some type of pullback. But if you wanna chase it, go ahead. So even on hourly too, right? If I go to my hourly. It pulled back, right? Pullback, boom, bounce. Walch is just trading in the range. Any other questions?
How do you find these tickers, man? Why are you so good?
I'm not good.
Did you swing a firm?
That's on a firm? Yeah, I saw a firm.
I, 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 I thought about swinging, I got the phone, Pablo. I, I thought about swinging, I should have swung, but I get back in tomorrow.
It's cool, it's cool. No other questions, well, I'll let y'all get back to your day. Thank you for joining, we had an hour and fifteen minute call, if you have any. Questions, King Bob, he's like the sensei in this stuff.
Hold on, what you said? You said something, you said, ask me.
If you have any questions, just reach out to any, any of us, me, Bob, Kier, Prince, Devin, Mr. Miyagi.
I don't think nobody really here for real no more. Hey Juice, what's up, right, you here?
Work it out, Bob, but I'm, I'm logging off to get on Call of Duty.
Hey, uh, okay, bad, that's what I wanted you to say, uh, yep.
Good looking.
Alright.